For the Village Council regular meeting Tuesday, June 13th at 7:00 PM. Could we please stand for the political agents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you call the vote? Madam clerk, please.
Lori Borjo is absent. Kelsey Cook?
Here.
Maureen Hallen is absent. Allison Kemp?
Here.
Jacob Nicosia?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. I'll move to excuse Lori Borjo and Maureen Hallen. I'll vote by Cook, supported by Kemp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. Number four, approve the HMM. Is there a motion to approve the HMM?
Order to pen.
So, um, second? I will say motion made by Nicosia, seconded by Ken.
Sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. Number five, presentations. Open County Main Street accreditation for the Oxford Development Authority.
Danny, how are you doing?
Good evening.
Good, good. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
My name is, let's make my stuff adjusted here. How about that? Eric Close, Main Street, Open County. I'm sure you've heard of Main Street, Open County before, but for those of you who don't know it, as we started in the year 2000, we have about 28 communities participate in Main Street, Open County. Thirteen of those are what we call our select level, which Oxford is one of those select level. And really what select level means is that you have to meet certain criteria to be at that level. You have a DDA board, you have a DDA staff, you have a budget, you have a volunteer program, you're taking advantage of certain training offerings through Main Street, Open County. So really being at that select level allows Oxford access to resources not only at Open County, but also at the national level. So like I said, there's grants available, there's training. I do a lot of market research, so we have access to that data. Who's coming into Oxford? What do they look like? How do they spend their money? Things like that. But we're not here to talk about Main Street, Open County. We're here to talk about Oxford and their accreditation. So back in February, we had Jackie come in from the National Main Street Center, Main Street America, and she did an assessment and took a look at things like revitalization in the downtown, leadership programming, sustainable operations, economic development, things like that. Interviewed and I think many of you maybe took place in that or participated in that, looked at, actually interviewed volunteers, business owners. And what's really cool about it is they, she's a neutral party coming in from National to take a look at the downtown. It's not Open County doing the assessment, it's not the DDA board doing the assessment, it's actually someone neutral. So obviously, you guys know what you have here. You have a fabulous downtown, you have fabulous DDA staff, and I'm pleased to present that Oxford is once again accredited and congratulations. So.
Thank you.
So if we could, can I ask you to be in a picture, everybody? That mean, that he can do, or?
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect. Yeah, you're in it.
No, I won't be in it. She's a good looking person. She's a good looking person. Do you guys want me to take it?
Yeah.
There you go.
I was gonna say Tim's in it every year, so why aren't you in it every year?
Michael, who else want to get in? Michael, stop this.
Get close.
Yeah, get in there. There you go.
And there's an app for that desk.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yep. Oh, sorry.
All right. Next up, number six is public hearings. We have none this evening, so we'll go to item seven, calls to the public. This is the time for public comments, so anyone who wishes to approach the podium and speak to council on any topic, please feel free to do so. Anyone like to speak on their public comment? Yes? Okay. I'll follow them down.
Is there a second number two as well?
There is.
We have something, oh, yeah.
One there, yeah.
Yep.
Hi, thanks for letting me take a moment tonight. My name is Laura Chisinski. I'm actually a Rhode Island resident, but I'm a former teacher at Oxford High School. I work very closely with a group of students who formed a 501(c)(4) nonprofit organization called No Future Without Today. And later on your consent agenda, you'll be approving our event that's this coming weekend called Silence of the Diamonds. We just wanted to voice support, obviously, for approving our event, but a great thank you extended, huge thanks to the community, the Village of Oxford, Oxford PD, and the Open County Sheriff's Department, who have been working very, very closely with us and the planning of this already. We're really excited. This will be the second annual event. It was really successful last summer. It was a really great opportunity for the community to come together and have some moments of healing, some moments of remembrance, and we're really planning on that to be exactly the same format. We're really focusing on student involvement and stories from survivors at this year's event. So we'll have a series of speakers in Centennial Park, and the event is co-sponsored by No Future Without Today, as well as March for Our Lives Michigan. So we're going to really have a student-led focus with, of course, some adults and some behind-the-scenes roles. But like, we just really wanted to express how thankful we were for the support of the village right from day one with this, and that we're really looking forward to offering this opportunity to our community and for anyone watching on TV, or, you know, for the sake of the minutes. The plan for the day is to have like a little bit of a kickoff, some resource sharing, and some sign-making at 11:30 in Centennial Park. Speakers begin at 12:30, and at 1:30, we'll march up to the high school for a moment of remembrance. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other public comment? We'll move to the number eight, consent agenda, receiving file items. I'll move to receive and file consent agenda items A, 1, and 2, including correspondence and department reports. Is there a second?
Second.
Vote by Cook, seconded by Ken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. 8B, I'll move to approve the items 8B, 1, 2, and 3, including the bills in the amount of $211,889.87. Motion made by Cook, seconded by Nicosia. Vote, call vote, please.
Kemp?
Yes.
Nicosia?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
And Hallen and Borjo are absent.
Motion carries. Next is nine, unfinished whole business. 9A, the residential inspection ordinance.
Okay, I put two items. I catch up there. So. I had, is it in your packet? It's from McKenna?
I'm not seeing it. Are you seeing?
Oh, I got it right here.
Maybe I had it ordered. My number 10 is.
It's right off the budget.
Oh, there you go.
All right, well, I guess there's a copy anyway. So, the initial proposal we had from Ken Associates was to put together the registration program, the registration process, enter any properties into the database and things like that. So obviously, we just approved that ordinance, I believe, last fall, I think it was, last summer. We've already gathered over 130 some properties, which encompasses about 450 apartment units, including the Garden Line, Main Street. So I asked McKenna to reach out to put together recalibrated orders or plan, so to speak, and this is what they come up with. They, I had to answer a couple of questions. One of the things they asked about was how often would you like to have them done? I asked them for something like a three-year rotation with as many properties that we have, that would still be quite a lot in a year. The one exception to that would be, one of the Oxford Manor Apartments, that one, South Piney, there, we probably wouldn't inspect every one of those.
Simple.
You know, it would just stand. It's kind of like when I talked to Chief Schultz when he was doing that, they don't inspect everything like that as well. They look at a certain, here's a two-bedroom, here's a three-bedroom, you know, things like that. And again, those were built as apartments to have, to use from the get-go. I just worry about those. So even though, instead of proxy 450 properties, we probably wouldn't be doing that many inspections because they'll be tearing down those of that property. But it still gives us an idea of the cost involved. They have contact property owners to schedule the inspections. They would then schedule the inspections. They would work with us to develop a payment verification system, generate the inspection checklist. They asked if we had a form. I said, no, they created one. They've done this in other communities as far as inspection forms themselves. They would then clean the property, ensure it's re-inspected, which is more than likely, some will have to be re-inspected, and get those all scheduled, take care of those as well. And then, basically, what I thought before, it was kind of like a turnkey situation with that. We would handle all the work that are in. If they reached out this incremental inspection, we would then reach out and do the collection of the payments, to ensure that was done at hour end, and that they would perform the inspection, and then provide us with a complete report. And the estimate it would take two to three and a half hours to complete, part of that being administrative back at their office. They'd look at a rate of 80 per hour through your registration cycle. So that, they basically provided the scope of work, is what I was looking for, because it was so much different than their initial proposal.
Were you able to discern from their information what we would have to charge?
They didn't give that great of a detail breakdown on that.
I was able to figure it out.
No.
I mean, I know you have to make, you have to make yourself whole plus a certain percent of that.
Yeah, it wouldn't be 450, so it'd be.
I was not able to figure out what we would have to charge for this.
Yeah, it would've been two to two and a half hours each at 8 bucks. Right there's 160 to 200 dollars.
Every time.
Each time. And then there might be a different rate for a follow-up.
So the two and a half hour, two, two and a half hours was for, what number of items did we end up settling on?
Well, I sent them the list we had last time, which only had about six, seven items on C, Theta, and Theta.
So that was not their original?
No. It was a scale though.
And that includes some of the work coming out, doing the inspection, documenting what they have, going back to the office, entering the data. Yeah, you did all the savings. It's a blended rate, so is it 250? So they're gonna be around 250.
Yeah. Really good to know. Was it closer to like $10,000 total, or, I'm not talking to 450 properties?
Yeah. Again, that was off the cuff. Then with the, I sent them the address list that we had, so they knew how many, some of whom have multiple units. I don't know if that's noted in our database, duplex or multi-unit. So I just wanted to give them an idea of what their hours and what their costs would be.
Is council intent for 100% recoup from property owners, or is this like, we want village residents paid for? So have we 100% recouped?
I agree with you, so to that extent. Something you said with the duplexes of, where, when, I understand grouping the apartment buildings together, the duplex would be each individual.
For the most part, yes. Only those ones that are like that, we'd have 82 bedroom units that are built the same, or 40 single bedroom units that are built the same. Those, you don't have to look in every single one to see, you know, what kind of power panel and stuff, because those are built commercially for that use. It's more of the old homes that are now duplex or multi-unit, things like that, that are more unique, that they were definitely being inspected every year.
It seems like it's gonna be up near like $200 an inspection then, for the cost of, kind of, plus our administration.
Yeah, I was looking at 2, 250.
And then they didn't give an indication of what type of re-inspection cost would be, because once they've been there, they know. They're like, back then, maybe you look at water pipelines, perhaps the main rail or something like that, that is on our list that they didn't have, or perhaps the furnace guy didn't make it in time and they didn't have that there when they showed up now, you get a week or so later. Maybe something like that, they could just forward down to them without having to re-inspect. I just wanted to get a feel for them, let them know where we were at in the process.
My concern is, I, I do think that this should be paid, the caution that we warn the residents, this should be paid for by the property owners, but then I know that property owners will put, pass this cost on to their tenants. It's gonna make the rental up sort of unaffordable. So we have to balance housing issues, affordable housing issues with safe, safety, which, that's like the struggle in every community, right? So people will take unsafe conditions because they can't afford other things, so it's, those are just talking, thinking about right now.
And I said, I got this the day we were putting that package together, so there wasn't time to go back to them and say, well, I'll tweak it, tweak it, tweak it. So I want to at least kind of show you where they're coming from, and what kind of questions and answers we ask. We go back then, and maybe finding it is better.
Yeah, I think we need to give them some more questions, and maybe they can attend our next meeting.
Like a re-inspection PD, you know, what might that be?
I'd like to see an example.
Form?
Yeah, form or output or something like that.
They, they do this in other communities. I know at one time they were doing town support ahead, thousands of properties, you know.
I think Mo was gonna research how other communities handle it, like Rochester.
I've looked at other websites, yeah, several of them. Pete had a nice story, but Old Park has a pretty robust one, we'll say, of where his daughter was in a home, her own home, rented out, and now having to comply with all the rental things, and several things that she had to do in order for it to leave, and rented out for a couple of years.
What was it, what was it charged? She, darling?
I wonder how it's.
I called, I called Ferndale to see what theirs was. They have people on staff that actually do it, a little bit bigger than us, but I want to say the fee was right around $200, about there. They do it every two years, though, so this spread across three years, maybe about $80 probably per year. I mean, that's peanuts to have a viable business, I would think, within the community.
Yeah. Allison?
So, Lawlerford does their, DPW does their inspections. I should have, Doug Moore, I did not call them, but that, would that be something we would like to explore?
I assure them I would probably say no, because these guys are pretty much tested out. A, B, I'm not sure what kind, some of the things that people tell me were found in this inspection down there, I wouldn't think we would want a DPW employee to be responsible to find, like the grounding and the power panel, things like that. Yes, they could go through training and get up to that, I suppose, but I think having someone that that's what they do, do it. Now, larger communities have full-time staff, and it could be even DPW, that's, that might be the other person does for six months of the year. That's a little different story than I think our guys doing, say, you know, 50 a year, 60 a year, and then.
I like the idea of having a third party do it, just from a liability perspective as well, too, to kind of transfer some of that risk over to the third party as opposed to us, and kind of keeping our hands out of it. But I would think that we would need to at least get electrical or HVAC people residential, like kind of on staff and those skill sets if we were gonna do that.
Yeah. And our guys are out there, any community, day in, day out. They don't want someone to, oh, I'm the guy that, you know, inspected my house, but yeah, my friends that didn't inspect him, let's do it, you know, that thing puts them in a bad light. I get, larger communities, it's a little more, maybe nameless, faceless. It's a little different here.
Do yours, your daughter, don't part?
Yes.
I'll check if they're being.
I think I may have.
Garbage.
City of Uppier, they're, they're in how staff does theirs, but it's the building department. There are different ways to do it. Larger communities have larger staff, so that's way, but like, you know, for the smaller ones, by all means, the mechanics of the world do them. Again, that's kind of what they do.
Could they attend our next meeting, do you think, basically?
Yeah.
So maybe we send, and get council's questions, I guess, just email Joe, and then Maureen contribute, and Lori as well.
And that's what he, they asked them on your attendance, saying, right now, we have some little go-on. Let's just kind of bring this first bite at this, and kind of see what they come up with. Again, they're still based on the 450, which isn't a number we're gonna have. The 150 a year, the cost of, well, $30,000 per year for the village, so they're looking right there at 200 apiece, just in that estimation.
The cost wouldn't go up based on the less units, would it?
I don't think so, because they're looking to do 15, 10 to 15 hours per week, 15 to 20 on inspections, and the rest would be in the administration end. So whether they do, you know, two days a week or three days a week, I don't think it would change. I could, I can make sure, clarify that, make sure.
Okay. Any other questions council wants to ask at this time? No. Okay.
No.
And, and I think I've shared with May 2021, I think it might've been now, we had it down to, or 22, the last list pared down, list we had of about 63 items on it. I can only share that.
Yeah, we don't mind something that are real.
I shared that with McKenna, but they knew.
Okay.
But a couple of things that Pete had mentioned, when his daughter's home, ours talked about a minimum 60 amp service in the unit, which, again, somebody's older, packed building, that might not be there, but one of the things, the grounding source to that being bonded to the water system. Was it you that had an issue with yours about jumping over or something?
Yeah, because I changed out my meter and put a plastic meter in, so it wasn't grounded anymore.
That's what you should mention, too, how it has to get on one side of the meter as well as get to the other side of the meter.
And blew three of my appliances. My stove, my furnace, and my espresso machine, which was really sad.
I mean, the first two.
So, yeah.
Wow.
That might be something we want to make sure, and we need to, under our electrical panels, 60 amps will proper ground them.
Right. Yep. That would be great. Okay, well, I think we can reach out to our fellow council people who aren't here tonight, and let them know if we can just forward questions, and then McKenna will be ready next month.
Yep.
Okay. Anything further on this item before we move on? Thank you.
Yes.
Yep. Look at opportunity, public comment. Yep.
We'll wait.
You can, if you, if there's anything you want to say, I don't, okay. Kind of towards the underside of the agenda, or moving pretty quick, so. 9B, food and food establishment ordinance, repeal.
So I put in one of them, Penny building official review. I have loved the equipment. I'm sure the, for the whole part, it should be gone, but I just wanted to build a official review it, in case there's one small or two little small aspects of it that you may say, well, this bill is kind of rough, a little bit. I don't foresee it, but he has that chance.
It's, I think it's a little bit old. It's a bit of a testurization.
Yes.
It's pretty, it's pretty.
So I didn't, I didn't bring it up until he had a chance to review it as well, just to get another eye. So I, I just left Penny's review, so.
Okay, so now we actually need that. Okay, I can't find it in my packet, so let's, we have been on to do anything about it.
Yeah, well, there are.
I remember from last one. Any questions from council on that?
No.
9C, Wackel project update and propose escrow agreement.
So this is in your packet there, and that's what the map I gave you, or the, with the coloring book, large, larger size. Just give a full background. Jacob, I know you worked near your garden somewhere with the PVE agreement. So if you look at the property, these were, this is the whole layout of the PVE agreement that started in 2016, 17. You see 32 west, or east, 36 east, 38 east. Those are the three properties that the village's DDA owned. Those were traded to Mr. Wackel in exchange for, there was two other properties east of 38, I think, maybe 48 and 46. Those two were demolished, there was one down on the south side, standing, with the parking lot showing now that was demolished. So he was demolishing two or three of his homes and properties and placing the parking lot on those. Where building A is at the bottom, or building C, actually, it says A, that that's not the envelope square rectangle, it's building C at the bottom. That is still a rental home there, so that, that was proposed to be a commercial building, but that's still a rental home there on Stanton, 19 Stanton, I think it is. So that would, that could still stay there without defiling the parking lot. Again, the pot of gold, so to speak, at the end of this rainbow for the village and the DDA was twofold. The extra parking, the parking lot space that was owned by Mr. Wackel, as well as vacant lots of 32, 36, 38, all being built on, that were vacant, so they have increased tax revenue, that would be DDA capture. So that's what the whole big picture was at one time. So what's come up now is 36, 38, and the park over to the parking lot, which I believe was his 48 and 42. He has recently listed for sale. They're vacant, and when that, when the realtor was in here, that raised some concern for me, and I reached out to Mr. Wackel, said, well, we want to ensure that parking lot is, so I have a equipment manual there. I spoke to him, he's in agreement that he has to put together some kind of escrow agreement, if those properties sell, that money he sets aside in escrow to, in order to properly fund all the remaining portions of the parking lot, it'd be a lot of trouble. Now, you see the dumpsters around and dumpster fittings, and the block dumpster is didn't place now, completely a couple of weeks ago, but there's still a lot of work to do with parking lot. You got the limestone base, you got light poles, you got shrubbery, you got fencing, you got all the curb gutter and two layers of asphalt. So just off the cuff, Dave, Wackel and I were talking, it could be easy $200,000 left of funding required to complete that project. So the agreement that we're looking to put together, that we agreed to as well is list those items, four, five, six items. If you sell this property, then one of the escrow and add those money, items are done, we could release some of that money to use to pay it for.
So the original thought on this was to lean those properties in the then-amount owed on the parking lot, and I understand why he doesn't want to do that, because that's gonna affect the ability to sell and whatnot. The second thought I had was to have him post a separate controlling performance bond, which he now wants to be an option in the agreement that we draft. But the, the main point here is that your money to get the parking lot needs to be secured out of the proceeds of any sale that occurred on these properties, otherwise they fly away. So he's willing to sign an agreement that, so let's just say over here, you have the parking lot, and at any given time, certain things are due on the parking lot, but they decrease over time. And over here, you have to settle the properties. So whenever they settle, and we need to tag the amount of money that then fits, that's left on the parking lot. So we're not gonna commit to that number upfront. It's gonna be a floating number depending on when the sale occurs. And he's also wants an option to do a straight-out performance bond in this agreement. So it's true in this case, instead of drafting the agreement and spending time on it, and then getting it to you here and then working with Mr. Wackel, we thought we would tell you what the agreement's going to say, and see if it is okay with you, and then we would go and do the agreement and get it executed. You need security for the balance of the parking lot work. The only thing I can see that you can tag is the proceeds of, of that sale.
For the performance bond, if we invoke that, do we do the work and then charge him for it? Kind of.
Well, the performance bond is, is a company that is bonding the performance on action, so you just trigger the performance bond, and then you get the money and you complete the work, which is, you know, not, not always, you know, it's not your, it's not your day-to-day business to do, but you could do it.
But he wants that option there. How would that work in the agreement? You could select it.
Well, it would be, it would be, it would be at any time, through the course of this agreement, he can post an adequate performance bond to the satisfaction of the village's legal counsel. That would be the wording. So I would have to approve two things, and there's two things to look at in the performance bond. Is it enough money, number one, and what triggers it? Because the trigger of any bond is the key to the bond. You don't want to have arguments over whether the bond's been triggered.
Can you get a bond?
I think you probably could, but.
It's not his favorite option.
It's probably not his favorite option.
Because he's. You lose money.
You lose money automatically on a performance bond. I mean, but, but, I mean, I, this is where we, we need to be, we need to be, the parking lot needs to get done, and we need to have the closing.
Yeah.
As a line item into closing.
I agree.
A check to the village for the then-unfinished portion of the parking lot.
And so with all due respect, do these properties need to sell before our parking lot gets done?
That's not an indication to it.
That's not what he said. What you're, what you're, what you're saying is what I, what you're saying is what I, was it, you know, you're supposed to be doing this. That's not what he said. What, what you're, what you're, what you're saying is what I, what, what you're saying is what I, was it, you know, you're supposed to be doing this, and now you, now you're like, do you need to sell these in order to do this, is what you're asking.
Yeah, which is what I've been asking for like a year.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But when.
I mean, an escrow is better than not an escrow, a hundred percent, but I'm just curious.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, it just, it raised my concerns when the realtor was in.
I drove by, I'm like, why are these for sale? I didn't know that those are separate, but anyways, yes.
Well, I brought my head around all that. Do we have the issue with the work that is already done deteriorating in the meantime?
It's not the greatest thing they have to see in this that their public has. I mean, it's just being saturated.
The answer to your question is yes. From what I know, building. Yeah, there's a sequence, and you're onto it, Allison, there's a sequence in, you know, timing. Um, you don't really want these large time gaps in between stages. So your, your question is a very good question.
I was supposed to start inspiring Tim on this, right?
I'm gonna look at my notes.
Yeah, it's sometime June, I think it was. Was, yes, the base code beginning in June.
Parking lot last week in March, two weeks for paving, and it's June?
No.
No. Okay.
So right now, you said it was a quarter million dollars to finish?
Just ticking off some of the items roughly, you know, uh, six thousand curving, you know, ex-mountain and sidewalking, and then the, the asphalt or the limestone base first.
Wait, I have updated notes, I'm sorry. July, mid-July asphalt.
No.
There you go.
It was restake. You notice there are great stakes now there in the last week or so. I don't remember last week, couldn't even survey, come on, restate it.
So then, then the next question you'd say is, is, is the value of the properties that are now for sale enough to satisfy the work that needs to be done on the parking lot? I tend to think it's probably true.
Let me close that one, give you a watch.
How do we? How do we put the bond or the escrow, to phrase, you know, if construction costs go up, or if what he already did turns to mush? Like, how do we?
I would say this is almost two separate subjects, right? That's a problem in and of itself, you just write, but there's X amount of dollars available. We just want to make sure, whatever dollars available, set aside. Whether it's enough, let's say it's one hundred and fifty for the lot, but there's two fifty to do with parking lot. That's, it's not meant necessarily that, that sale will provide enough funding for everything, but whatever's there, pass the hell aside.
Are we also gonna have to impair the cost of like engineering, or is that all done or?
No, it's done. It's done. Yeah, the plan's done, engineering's done, the water main under is done, the underground plans are done, um, the footings and then the asphalt or the concrete dumpster enclosure is done. He was in a week or so ago talking about some run and wiring for the, uh, parking lot, letting the pole, plate holes.
I also don't want anyone to think that if we put this escrow agreement in place, that that means that's where the money for parking lots coming from. That's just a security. It's not, we're waiting to sell these now to.
No, that's just, that's, that's a backup security plan for the cost of the parking lot, right?
Like I said.
In a sense, it's your performance bond.
Yeah.
Had she not came in to inquire something about the property as the realtor, um, I wouldn't have brought it to a drive-by, I'd seen it, but she was in, and I, and I made a discussion with her about our concern, but, uh, hey, that would be okay. So I reached out to Mr. Wackel, and he totally understands, and no, no, I have no problem doing that. We don't, if, if they'll sell, they could sell in a week or might not sell at all, who knows, right? I don't know what they're looking for, um, but as a security for our end, we want to make sure that it's at their disposal, that money is absolutely secured for our project. So I guess you have to, and we would prefer to get it done and drafted and placed and signed prior to our next meeting in, in July. And that's, so we don't, even though we don't have even a draft to show you, um, I guess you have to have a little thing.
Well, these will be the terms. The terms will identify the, the properties that are for sale. The, the document will identify what's now outstanding on the parking lot. And if the properties transact, sell, or are invaded in any way, um, money equal to the then current, um, work that needs to be done on the parking lot shall be secured from the proceeds. That's the tenor of the agreement. There'll be a few more words in it.
Just curious, do we have the ability to put a lien on it?
A lien? Well, we, yes, we, 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 if he would agree to lean the properties for the value, right, I mean, that puts you at the table right away, right, at a closing. No much closing without your lien being satisfied.
You would have to agree though for?
He would have to, we, we don't have the right to just impose a lien on it. It would have to be a voluntary lien arrangement, but I, I, I understand his argument on that. That, that, that's a huge impediment to the sale of the property if it's leaned, right? So.
But he's not in breach of contract if we?
No, there's, there's nothing, there's no judgment leads, there's no, we have a duty to take in the interest where we can impose, unilaterally impose a lien on his land. He'd probably sue you for, uh, encumbering the property. Or he could sue you for encumbering the property.
I'll move to allow the village manager to sign escrow agreement between village and Wackel Properties for the parking lot funding, once completed by village legal counsel. Or motion made by Cook, seconded by Kemp. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. Let us know what's going on. Thank you. All right, ten new business resolution, twenty-three, ten Oxford, Addison youth assistance, volunteer appointment.
Uh, yeah, you have it in front. It's pretty self-explanatory. Um, Officer Westonberger, um, he's already been volunteering with them, um, making it officially, yes.
Log with Linda Moran.
I'm not sure how involved she's been to date. I know they work a lot back and forth, but I'm not sure.
He's also looking for number.
Yeah.
Kind of the same time.
Okay. Move to adopt, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one zero as presented, appointing to the board of directors, Linda Moran, Polyatrial Manager, and Brendan Westonberger, Oxford Police Department Officer. Support. Motion made by Cook, seconded by Kemp. Roll call, will please.
Nicole Steo.
Go. Kemp?
Yes.
Cook? Yes. Motion carries resolution, next to this. Next is ten B, special event application, twenty-three zero five, silence to the violence in Centennial Park.
Here you, we have the application for the special event in hand. Um, there was the, uh, information form, the beginning deposit, and the autonomous agreement, proof of insurance. The ethic was a request as the new, uh, application allows for, to require level of insurance requirement waiver from the grant, to be granted by the village council. Everybody else is in, in order, and the chief's been involved for a few weeks now helping the plan, and it sounds like the sheriff's premise as well. Again, last year he went out, it was a beautiful sunny day, hope it stays that way. But I think everyone else has got what they need.
Any questions from council? Move to approve a special event application for silence to violence in Centennial Park as presented and granting the waiver for the insurance requirement. Court. Motion made by Cook, seconded by Kemp. Um, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nay? Motion carries, event is approved. Um, ten C, consideration of E V charging locations in the northeast and northwest village parking lot.
And so, you know, we also have one in the southwest lot, which can install within the, uh, meter from D T E, which any year now. And, uh, the one on the east side, uh, it became a little problematic. Initially, we chose that spot on the south, or I guess on the east side of the monitoring place, where that says ten or twelve east. First of all, they put the mural on there, so now it would be blocking more than the, but secondarily, the problem came up with, we chose that because of our lighting panel cabinets right there, we initially thought, and so we kind of figured that very quickly fit inside of it. Well, and that's not the case, went in with a Unistruck, things remounted on the property, that really clever of that area had a wall that blocked some of the, uh, mural that was, you know, relatively hidden. So the top, uh, picture you see there is to relocate one in the southeast area of the village, down, uh, right near the island there behind the movie theater. That's just north of Stanton, on the backside of the movie theater. It's great location. We can come right down to the pole, power and Unistruck and, and meter cycle and equip it there. And it's only a few feet away where the pole, the E K charging would have to be mounted. So that one works good for re-located, look, locating where we already have under agreement. The other ones are in northwest and northeast lot, are in the bottom there, and that's something that the contractors come back, was to ask if we're interested, A, and B, we want to, uh, extend or add to our existing agreement with them. Again, this is all done at hundred percent third cost. And those locations are, are at the backside of the northwest lot over here. That one actually made, the, the, the old dot represents where the charging unit would be. The, uh, electrical panel and meter cycle were more likely to be mounted on the solid wall of the concrete wall of the dumpster enclosure. Don Bradley said he was fine with that being mounted on there. And then on the right-hand side, that is directly behind Red Knaps, uh, that is the church there, you see at the right-hand side of that, um, picture. So we'd come right in, right down off that power pole, just a few feet away to mount where the old dot is for the charging units themselves. I included the copy of the agreement that we did with, um, state contracting, um, last year. And just to be sure, I don't know if we would amend this and add them in, or if we would create a new one perhaps, um, but first off, I want to be sure council would, would enter something, have two more locations. A and B, if they agree with locations, and then we can incorporate that either into a new grid or amendments. I don't have the date on here, just, uh, seen as sure.
Is that a Monday?
Yeah, I think it would be on that.
Yep.
This is.
September first twenty-two is when we.
Right.
Put this together, and so it was a September meeting last year, I think it's when we did, so, um, they've been really good to work with. They had to change their whole plan over here, right behind the pharmacy. Trench across the parking lot, cut it, trench it, they put it back really nice, like, uh.
Good.
I was really shocked to see the units and Unistrucks, how industrial it looked, and so they're gonna, they put some mold in there to become black, and planted a couple of arid weeds on the backside of it, perhaps, to help give it a little more color. Because again, we chose that with the initial understanding that equipment was going to be included indoor cabinet and DT. Found that not going to work, um, we had to have it, so. Still a good location for it, but we just had to see the equipment more for. So I guess just something from council, uh, to, uh, allow us to go forward.
Any questions, your concerns, or challenges? Okay. I'll move to approve the village manager to sign an amendment to the state contracting contract for the locations in the northwest and northeast parking lot.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Nicole Steo. Any discussion of motion? Hearing none.
Well, actually, this, so this will give us one in each parking lot, basically?
Is it?
Okay.
Yeah, cool, yeah. One in each bathroom.
That's very nice. Okay, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Great, thank you. Um, so last on our new business is consideration of a new ordinance for food trucks.
And I think it was probably February when I first brought the township version of it and talked about it, we were gonna maybe incorporate it into our food and food establishment ordinance. And that's when I realized our food and food establishment ordinance was just way out of line with today's world.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and as we looked to appeal that one, I think we could go ahead forward and, and adopt the rule of food establishment ordinance on, uh, on its own. It's really much more than under old ones to, that we need to really be married to. Basically, I took the township one, took out any references to the township in place of the village, and there was a couple of references to their other ordinances. One of them might have been on, for the definition of alcohol. I, I, I had left a little, like, the M C L reference in there, so there's also reference, you see, um, section six, three, two of its code. I just struck that out, so I left that on there. For the most part, though, it's a ditto of the one adopted by township where the department pretty much does everything. They do the inspections. There was, the fees are something, I believe, the township and or the village then would set by the parlor.
Fee structure? Or the fee structure. Annual fee structure. Chief, it was, when we first started on this, it was your thought that from an enforcement standpoint, and the continuity of having the ordinance is very similar, was something you were in favor of. So that was our, our, our guidepost going in was to keep it as close as, if not the same as we could.
Correct. Good. The one thing I would bring up about this is currently, if a food truck is in the village on private property, we don't require any permit as far as it. If you want to set up one of our downtown public space parking lots, I would, and look at that and consider it a special event application. So any type, the special event application, it falls in the definition of that. So we may have to look at that a little bit, is it still then, if they have a food truck in a set up parking lot, is that still a special event? So we have to look at that perhaps to see.
Like Graff Camp has food trucks in the parking lot. Is that our public parking lot, or is that their?
They can spread a little bit. Was out in the parking lot a little bit, but perhaps, but, but they're parking along the curb, so that also could be an issue with the traffic lane. Because there's, there's traffic because of the high school around them at that point. It's not a fire lane, I don't think, it's not a market's fire lane, but.
Right.
It's a traffic lane there, so they, that, it had, had a serious issue down the road, but.
I'll see, if, if you have a party, you have a food truck on your private property, that's a different issue, right, Chief?
As far as our, you know, they still need to be licensed here though, right? You know, move, this, this ordinance requires a food truck to be licensed for any activity.
Right.
Our, my concern is currently, we require them to do a special event application if it's on public property, village-owned property.
I don't know if they'd be going up for your property.
No.
So.
I'm just wondering, you know, what, besides safety, like, is this gonna have any effect on food trucks in our downtown?
That was another, that, well, part of it too, is when those, especially COVID, the twenty, M twenty-four pandemic, COVID, the restaurants were, you know, struggling. And for them to see food trucks popping up on our things was a little disheartening, to say the least, right? Um, so for you to make it easier for that to happen, there's a concern there too, I guess, and the rest of ours. Nevertheless, they would have to be licensed. This pretty much is a clause, and mandates them to be licensed and inspected.
Right, it has nothing to do with where they're.
Right, our, if it's no, we can still have the special event application in there to set, yes, you're licensed and you're inspected by the fire department, and you satisfy this ordinance. However, we have a special event application for you to operate on public property.
I don't know if I like the idea of that, but somewhere like, gonna be put between approving a bad application that we shouldn't really have an opinion on necessarily, as long as it comply with the rules, versus our businesses who don't want the food trucks.
Restaurant.
Restaurants.
Yes.
The businesses like them, frankly, a lot of people.
Some do, some don't.
So, okay.
Now, could we, could we offer permits at very low prices, like zero dollars, in order to still have control over, if there was a COVID, for instance, and we didn't want them down there and want people to support the businesses?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what the permit fee is, the township, I'm not sure, Pete, if you, if you heard about it at all. It's fifty dollars, or something like that, for a hundred fifty for the year.
They need to be the exact saying, you can't have one cheaper than the other.
Right, so what, my, my point is, it's, it's nominal, I believe.
They'll all be running to the building.
And they are, they're all good for the calendar year, so if you get your permit in October, doesn't matter, you're getting a new one come January, right? If they're not twelve month permits, they're, if they're twelve months, you get a January one. But the other part of it is our special event application, we, we re-banked, we used to have a fifty dollar application fee, now we removed that as well, so we have no fee to do the special event. It's more of a timing and awareness, and how do we deal with crowds, and do you need special parking, and do you need police, do you need U V W? Those are the things that are, why do we have special event application in place?
Chief, did you guys get any fee for local restaurants when you were looking at this?
None.
None.
I thought they were talking like.
Oh, there's.
That happened down, that's not up?
There's a couple of chiefs out there, I'm sorry. You didn't get any, uh, no blowback at all?
So would they need a permit if it, for example, was on Oxford Lakes, like, in their park property?
That's.
That's private, that is private.
That, I think it's a couple of years ago, I was catching a little flack. For our special event.
Oh, right.
The, in the current situation, they wouldn't need a permit for that.
So could they go theoretically set up shop? If they have a permit, could they just go park at, um, Scripter?
No, because that's, or they need our permission.
Okay.
That's all right.
So again, um, the way it sits now, even if this is adopted, all this does is ensure they get inspected, part of the inspection process to, to. Part of the inspection process is to ensure that they have their health department licensing, state department, state mission licensing, and then being inspected for safety things. That's all that means. Doesn't mean they can come set up in one of our parking lots. Because our special event application still requires them to come to us. They can set up at your home or open house, or they can set up, you know, the private beach over there as well. And that doesn't affect us at all, as long as they're permitted through this process.
This is just for safety.
Yes, this is just for safety and, you know, making sure they get proper inspections.
You're trying to get control over the safety of the entirety of something that's happening.
It doesn't change our special event application.
What kind of action are you looking for?
Well, a possible first reading would be the only thing.
Schedule a first reading, or that's...
Yes, we should schedule a first reading. Bring that in.
It's just conversion, right.
Okay, gotcha.
I just, you know, that's why I put there is a discussion and positive first reading.
So should, do you need a motion, schedule the first reading at the next regular meeting? I'll move that. Second, so, motion made by Cook, seconded by Nicole Stea. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries.
Chief, chief, chief. Chief, but to make sure that each truck has taken a time.
Not speaking on behalf of the fire department, but my recommendation would be for you to talk to the fire department because if someone comes into the township and already gets inspected and everything, I believe, my personal opinion is that they should be able to just automatically come into the village and do the thing. And vice versa, if you get a food truck that comes and gets inspected to set up behind Graff Cap, then they should be able to go into the township too. So I think you should try to get it so that you can work together on it somehow.
I think the way this is written, the fire department can do the inspection, give a sticker on it.
Yes, that's all it's done.
But it might say actually township, maybe just stop the fire department. That way, we know, it covers, it covers the entire area, so it's one permit for the entire area, doesn't matter where they got it, as long as they got it through the fire department.
Correct.
So it's the ordinance, I'm sorry, did I get it wrong?
Yes.
Yeah, we could, so Chief, your, your theory on that is that it's one inspecting body, so.
Correct.
We don't want to duplicate permits. That's not our intention.
Yeah, I think if you have the food truck guys have to pay twice, in the same community, so I mean, if they're, if they're already being inspected, if you can operate the township, then they should be allowed to.
See, the way it's written, the fire department is the inspecting body, and the fire department is then the, yes, inspected, here's your stamp, sticker, put it on the wood. You have your Oxford Fire Department inspection.
So we wouldn't, we don't want to make the township have to change their ordinance, but who put it in ours?
To try to do it though, yeah. All the, the other thing too, when you're mentioning about not having them enforced or whatever on private property, the issue is through the fire prevention, or through the fire prevention organs and everything, as you guys have already adopted the new one. And same on the township side of it. Technically, the food trucks are still supposed to be inspected no matter what.
Yeah, that's not what I meant.
We could turn around, you know, anybody from the fire department could pull into your driveway and get a food truck there, they'd be inspected. The food truck guy is the one responsible at that point, not you.
Okay.
The part I was referring to is our existing special event application, right? This ordinance would say no matter where they are in that fire department range, they have to be inspected and...
You know, they're one, one road over, so maybe they didn't...
Right. As Jack Curtis would say, we are all four eight three seven one, so.
Right.
Let's do it.
And it's worded in here that Oxford Fire Department. But I think the sticker on the bottom might have said Oxford Township ordinance sticker. So maybe we just look at Oxford, change it to Oxford Fire Department sticker, per food, per food truck sticker. That way, it doesn't matter where they got it.
I believe it's changed because if the two thousand twenty-two ones did say township, but the twenty-three ones is changed for the department.
Okay, that's, so it's universal sticker, universal inspection, doesn't matter where they pay it, but at us.
All right.
They're gonna pay you, I think, is the way it was written.
To the fire department.
Yes.
Good thought, Chief. That's good.
Thank you. All right, eleven, there's nothing. Twelve, second opportunity for public comment. Anyone like to speak? Please welcome yourself to the podium. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Judith Knight. I'm a lifelong Oxford resident, and I'm also one of the student organizers for Silence the Violence March for Oxford. And I just wanted to extend my appreciation for you supporting it, as well as the Oxford PD and Open Shares Department. Really excited for this event because it's just a way to, one, promote student leadership, but also bring the community together in an event of awareness and remembrance. Specifically, it's led by No Future Without Today, which is an organization committed to ending the violence through legislative changes, as well as expanding mental health resources for students in particular. So, please, I just wanted to say thank you. We're really excited for this event, and we hope to see some of you there this Saturday.
Thank you so much for your comments. Any other public comment?
Come on, one more.
Oh, hi, my name is Madeline Johnson. I'm the co-vice president of No Future Without Today. And I just wanted to say thank you as well for approving our march. We're super excited. We've been planning this for a very long time now. Last year's march was super successful. We had over six hundred people show up, I guess. So we're hoping for a similar turnout this year as well, and hope to see some of you there, like she said. I'm marching for Madison Baldwin. She was my best friend, and she was killed in the Oxford High School shooting. So it means a lot to me that I get to honor her and the others that we lost, so, again, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other public comment? I'll move to, yep, yes?
Come on.
She says no. She says no.
All right. We'll move to committee reports, and they're thirteen, so I know Lori covers NODA. Does anyone else have an update on NODA by chance? No, okay. And then Mo covers planning commission and cable commission. Any updates on planning commission?
They approved the site plan last week, the final current classified design. When is where the last?
Um, DDA, um, in my...
They're not...
Yeah?
Nothing going on.
Kimberly, would you mind if you have an update? Do you want to provide?
I am not prepared.
Okay, that's okay.
I apologize, I was not given enough.
I will, I will mention one thing that Kimberly and I talked about today. The org committee, I think it was, P, I think you're on, it must be the org. They talked about some kid activities in squad, perhaps the bend that they have over in Washington Square that has like tic tac toe or the tossing rings and stuff. Maybe put one of those in each quadrant, and they talked about maybe having a gentleman that does the neck activities for the arrows. Maybe paint some things on the sidewalk that are more permanent for kids, like a half-cuts thing or a tic tac toe thing or something like that. And that was this morning, brought to me, and I was a little like sidewalk chalk and things like that. And I'm like, well, obviously not down twenty-four, right? No, it'll be in the back sides. And I said, well, I'll bring up to council, I don't know, I mean, if I might like it, have to point not like it. There's a concern of who's gonna gather the stuff and put back in the evenings, which is nuts. I checked over at two in the morning, did they leave establishments downtown? And she's, since she's worked with some of the restaurants or businesses in squad that has kind of stepped up, so they'll kind of shepherd that stuff, so to speak. I was a little hot and cold then. I did want to give her, yeah, sure, sounds great, go for it. So I made sure to mention to council tonight. Painting terminal things down, decided, well, that's fine, nobody's turning on those, right?
Thank you. And I think Monday's the next DDA meeting, so I'll be there. I could provide the report next month as well. But I know the DDA is only doing fantastic things. You can see it around downtown every time you drive by, so. Along with a lot of the business and kind of seeing stuff they do, so. We'll move over to Palliant Trail. Joe, what's kind of up to attend?
Uh, no, actually, last one, I was, I was off at noon that day, it was meeting.
Okay.
So they tried to become a steel cars, no, no, no. So I did that, attended last meeting.
Okay. Joe, any manager report?
The one I dropped at your desk, this, this at the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Basically, what that is, is with the Fourth of July being on a Tuesday, the third obviously being a Monday, it's usually quiet around, often on those types of holidays, right, like that, especially with the Fourth. My, my plan is to allow everyone to take Monday as a vacation day and close the third and fourth. Burning any, you know, direction in the country for council, that would be our plan. I don't know about the police department side, if Chief was going to do the same. Doesn't look like he's in a...
Unfortunately, we don't close.
But the administration wants, you know, again.
Do whatever you want.
Everyone gets free, like, vacation July one, so everyone's planning vacation. So that was our thought. It's kind of silly, you have your weekend, come back on the third, and then Tuesday, I'll, I'll take a vacation day. Close that Friday or Thursday.
Yeah, I have no concerns.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm thinking, it works, I don't think, that's fine.
Can we follow up one second?
Sure.
So today we did finally get the final payout for the Hudson Dennison parts free project. Some of those things have been, you had to go around to ensure that the hydrants and things, those couple of points that were still being worked on in the last month. So we're basically done now. The last thing is to be approved for that. Lot of, lot of variations in that project. A lot of things we kind of fell across and added on to. We're still kind of worried about what our contingency budget with contingencies involved were, ready around eight hundred thousand. The parking and curving and streets all worked well. Some of the things that were added on extra was at the north side of the church there on Dennison and Antley, or I mean, the drainage structure and stuff that was in there. Some of the changes to the sidewalk behind the curb, those were never part of the original design. It was very hard, sloping wise and stuff to get the curving. There wasn't curving there to begin with in some cases, so that was a lot of infrastructure added in. But we added some of those things in just to make sure that we weren't flooding the church. They already had a flooding column there. So some of those things were added in. The catch basin down there on the south side of the five-one south building along Dennison, as it reaches out to M twenty-four, was a disaster when they were on page, whole removal and replacement of a green construction, things like that. Seven tank, we ran across, cutting across the parking lot, heading over to three south to redo their line. But all in all, it was good. It's good to have a little, it's a difficult project, but we're basically done.
Great.
Did they end up finishing back by the, the bricks back by the dumpster?
That, the gentleman's working on that now. That was unrelated, that's somebody backing into it. And that's one of those ones, sometimes we find out where the people are, who put their trees in our piles or signs, and something that sometimes could still on it, would please get there. But that one was an unknown. We don't know who backed in and checked that wall. There was an insurance claim. The gentleman's there today doing more work. We're gonna put some signs up there to prove it backing in. Because it happened to be one day when that wall was down, up there the way, the last few months, I'd drive by the one day, there's a full-size Ford pickup back in, between his bed and the ditch, it was like this far over where the wall would be. So like, not sure if he's gentleman parked there before, caused a problem, but we were gonna put some signs and stuff up there. They'll back in and put the wall.
Yeah, wall. Sounds good. Great. Okay, Mr. Nix?
No, all good. Thank you.
Okay. So now we're on fourteen, which is a closed session to discuss contract negotiations. So I would, we go into closed session, show it to MCL thirteen point two-six-eight C for purposes of collective bargaining agreement negotiations.